Shopping.
Yeah, I wish.
Buying don't shoot. They were on sale last week.
Okay, watch all that stuff. Flash sales for the holidays.
Cyber, what is it? Cyber Monday?
School board, you are live. I just want to let you know you are live.
YouTube thing is scheduled for, you know, seven o'clock start.
Done when I want to stop sharing. Wait, I see. Okay, there we go. So I'm sharing right now. So I'm just going to say, hey, class.
Uh, popcorn is English and cat one's Spanish.
It's not presenting.
Yeah, it's.
Is there a lag?
There's a little lag, but remember they're going to see from home, so to speak, on YouTube.
So I'm not going to see it move up there.
Yeah, but you're going to control from here.
So I'm just looking at them.
Yeah, that's built into it. And then when you're done, you can close the web browser tab out. And then go back to Zoom and just, you know.
Oh, can I go to agenda? Everybody, you did?
So why don't you hit?
Hey, John, are you there?
Yes.
Could you just remind me again how I share my presentation? You do PDF, right?
Yep, we're going to, uh, close this. So there's a green button that says share screen.
Yeah.
So same thing. You click on that. It's going to say, is it a entire desktop? Is it a Chrome tab? Is it a website?
Okay.
So is it open?
You want me to do that step now?
Yeah, we got a minute, I think, to check it, test it out. All right, there you go. Good. Yep. So you had slide two. Yep.
Okay.
So same thing. You just go through the slides as you need to. And then when you're done, you just up sharing and we're good.
All right, very good. Should I X out of it now? Stop sharing?
Uh, unless you're on first. Who's on first?
It was easy enough. I'll just get off of it and you can let me know when to come on.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Statham will announce. Okay. Now we can do with Google. He takes the background picture.
How are you? Yeah, you did a good job, huh? Hello, how are you? Dave just texted me, said, okay.
I got the window.
Yeah.
Remember to bring the microphone close to your speaker. All the time because what you speaking to microphone, they're going to be able to hear at home or elsewhere. John?
It's on, uh.
Good evening, everybody. All right. Is that okay?
Maybe you can talk a little bit louder. Right into the microphone.
You can tilt it up a little bit too.
Yes, yes, okay.
Uh, thank you very much for being here with us this evening. This is our first attempt at a help to the broadcast uh, board meeting and this will be canceled tomorrow. We are just returning from an executive session where we were reviewing the audit report uh, with Ally from RNS Abrams and she will be making a brief presentation uh, in a little while. So at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's, uh, 7:05. Julie, would you do well call today?
Barbara Dayton?
Yeah.
Tim Fraser?
Here.
Pat Raybien?
Here.
And virtual, do we have Dave Common?
Here.
Amy Rivera? Okay.
Okay, we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, first item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the previous meeting. So, um, you resolve that the, um, Board of Education hereby approve the, uh, the minutes from the meetings of October 5th, 2020, October 19th, 2020, and October 28th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Start it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dave's a aye. I saw his mouth move. Um, and right now, Ally, if you would be so kind as to, um, do your presentation on the, the state or finances, that would be great.
Hey, great. Good evening, everyone. I did meet with the Audit Committee to discuss in full detail the financial statements and communication letters of the district. Um, basically, I like to say there's two sets of financial statements. There's your modified accrual basis, which is all your funds. Uh, your general fund, which is your operating budget, your school lunch, capital projects, and federal grants. Then we convert that into the accrual basis of accounting, which in essence means that we put on all your long-term assets and long-term liabilities. Um, there were no new GASP statements that were issued this year. Um, we actually got a break, which was nice. Uh, I mean, not unfortunately due to COVID-19, but one of the GASP statements got, uh, delayed for a year, so we won't implement that till next year. Um, so there was nothing really new in the GASP financial world. Um, and then we did discuss the fund level, which is your operating budget. We did discuss the, uh, funding of the reserves and your fund balance. Um, right now, the district's at 4% of, uh, the prior year's budget, which is uh, the maximum allowed by law. So the district did not exceed the maximum allowed amount by law for their unassigned fund balance. The district has a plan for their fund balance and reserves and updates it yearly, so they do revisit those reserves every year. Overall, the district's in a healthy financial condition, which I'm happy to report, especially going into 2021, which I know that the district had many costs affected to reopening of the schools. And also, there's a lot of, uh, talks about potential state aid cuts. So hopefully, there are limited amounts of, uh, potential state aid cuts and the district, uh, have a feel, you know, is in good financial condition. They set themselves up to take care of that, um, if that does come to fruition. Um, we did basically, uh, we did issue no, uh, there was no material weaknesses to be reported, which I'm very happy. Um, there was just some minor recommendations that we did discuss. Um, that the district is going to have a corrective action plan on how to rectify those, uh, recommendations. So we were just here to help the district improve the district's internal controls. Um, and I just wanted to thank Julie and, uh, Mike Henry for, um, helping us and assisting us get through this audit. It was a little bit different this year. We did a lot of it remote. We have a company portal that's, uh, safeguarded, so a lot of the documents did get, um, uploaded to our share file. Um, we tried to do limited time out at the district. We did go visit, um, a day or two and were able to review all the audit documentation that we needed to file. So I'm happy that we're able to get this financial statements done in a more, you know, timely fashion. So thank you, uh, to the business office. And, um, if the board has any questions, um, I'd be happy to take them.
Well, I'm very happy to see that, um, we are in very good shape. Any issues that we have are very minor in terms of, um, you know, procedures of things getting, um, resolved. And I'm sure that we'll um, have those issues resolved soon. Um, so thank you very much for your help and, uh, for being able to be with us this evening.
Okay, thank you and stay safe, everybody. Thank you.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is a, a presentation about the, um, capital project update from Derek Knapp.
Good evening. Let me just try to share this.
Yes. Okay, congratulations, Derek.
What's that?
I'm offering you congratulations. We heard you were recently married.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I am married. Just trying to pull up the presentation. John, it's not on the screen like it was last time. Do you know what that could be from?
You have it open?
Do you have it open?
Um, I was just looking. I don't think it's open.
Took a while for it to load for me, so.
Uh, while that's being looked for, I just wanted to point out that we have Anna Jacobs and, uh, Ally Aguilar with us here, who to help with, uh, translation this evening for anyone who needs a translation into Spanish for, uh, for, for presenting.
Thank you, Barbara. Um, should I say that in Spanish or, uh, Alejandro and I introduce ourselves?
Yeah. Yes, please.
Buenas noches, Familias de Springs. Le habla la señora Jacobs. Nada más para avisarles que estamos aquí en el transcurso de la reunión. Por si acaso tienen alguna pregunta, pueden hacer la pregunta en español o algún comentario o alguna duda. Vamos a reir la presentación. Eh, también está presente la señorita Aguilar, Alejandra. Sí, estoy presente. Cualquier duda, aquí estamos para servirle.
Uh, Derek?
Yes, can you see the screen now? All right, great. Well, sorry for the delay and, uh, thank you for having us this evening. Um, tonight's presentation is going to discuss the following topics. The work progress for November 2020, the planned work for December 2020, construction photos associated with the work that's been completed over the past month. And at the end of the presentation, following the photo section, I'm going to provide the board with an update regarding the recent bids for the district-wide telephone system and the storage building. So the work scheduled for November 2020, uh, continuing masonry for the new addition. They're about 80% complete at this time. Installing the LGM roof trusses for the front of the building. Installing the decking for the classroom addition and gym. Installing roof trusses and decking for the hallways. Installing rough plumbing for the locker room bathrooms. Finished grading the new ball fields, constructing the backstop and dugouts for the fields. The work scheduled for December 2020, uh, they plan to complete all of the CMU, uh, work for the new addition. They're going to start the installation of the brick veneer on the outside of the new addition. They're going to install the sheathing, sheathing for the pitch roofs. Uh, they're going to complete the drainage for the new fields and parking area. Completing the irrigation and sod for the new fields. Completing the fencing for the new fields. Installing roofing for the new addition. And start all the MEP installations for the new addition. All right, so the photo to the left, it's, uh, the classroom addition. You can see the CMU, uh, block is all up. The yellow, uh, material that is there is flashing for at the window locations. Uh, you can also see the, the trusses, uh, on top of the roof. The right photo is the gym addition. Shows you the CMU almost completed. The metal decking is on in anticipation for the roofing. And that red steel up above is some supplemental steel for the HVAC systems. Here's some more photos of the LGM. Uh, those are light gauge metal. That's what that stands for, light gauge metal trusses for the new classrooms. Uh, so that will be sheathed next month and then the roofing system will be applied to the sheathing. To the right, again, gives you another angle with the trusses, shows you some of the flashings at the windows. Once, uh, the brick is delivered, uh, that will be concealed with the brick veneer. Here's some decking for the new classroom additions. So these are interior photos showing you again the completed CMU and some of the window openings for the, uh, classroom addition. Decking and supplemental steel for the gym. Again, that red steel up top is for the HVAC system, giving an additional support. Uh, the metal decking is nearly complete and, uh, be a big accomplishment to get the roof on in the month of December, allowing the guys to work through the winter, you know, without the elements. Some trusses and decking for the hallways. So these are some of the connecting links into the new addition. Again, just everything's getting prepped and ready, uh, for the next big phase, which is going to be the roofing and, and brick veneer. Some of the plumbing rough in. Left photo shows you the copper piping, uh, supply, return for, uh, cold and hot water. To the right photo, the black piping is some roof drain piping that will, uh, you know, support the, the, um, roof water and ultimately get it out to the dry wells. Here's some photos of the fields, so completely cleared. Uh, irrigation is, uh, partially in. It's topsoil is graded out. Some of their other grading and they're, they're getting ready, uh, anticipate, I believe, in the first or second week of December to have the sod delivered and installed. Photo to the left is the backstop for the new field. And the photo to the right, if you can see, it's a little tough to see in the back left-hand corner of that photo, is the fencing post for the new dugout locations. That concludes the photos. Um, before I get into the bids that were recently received, uh, any questions related to to presentation work that, uh, has been completed recently?
No questions, but it just, from my part, just delight in seeing how things are coming along. It's, uh, you know, this is great to see.
Yeah, they're making good progress. Uh, the guys are working well together. Um, we've been fortunate with weather and, uh, they've been taking advantage of it. So as far as schedule, they're right on schedule, if not a little bit ahead of it. And if, uh, they're successful in getting that roof installed before it gets too cold out, that's going to be a big milestone. That's really going to help springboard this, uh, project to completion. Any other questions? All right, so I'll get into the bids. So on November 10th, there was a bid opening. Uh, the bid opening was for the district-wide telephone replacement and the new storage building. Um, we received, you know, quite a few bids for the storage building, only two bids for the telephone system. Um, so starting with the new storage building, BBS and Park East have conducted prove-out meetings with the two low contractors for both projects. But sticking with the new storage building, uh, we had a prove-out with the low contractor who was JSK Construction. Uh, they appeared to lack the credentials to meet the requirements outlined in the specifications. Also, their bid was concerningly low, uh, based on previous estimates and, and the field of other bidders, they were much lower than the others. So we, we had long dialogue with them, checking references, trying to look at their insurance, make sure that they could, uh, meet what's required in the specifications. And it, it turned out at the end of that, it, it didn't feel like they could, could meet, uh, what they needed to. So we asked them to digest it over the weekend, look at their numbers. They did that. And today, they sent us a withdrawal uh, letter for their bid, uh, indicating that they made a mathematical error. And that's why their bid was, was so low in comparison to the estimates and the other bidders. So with them withdrawing, uh, the next low bidder, who we also conducted prove-out meetings with BBS, was JNH Construction. They appear to meet all the requirements. Both BBS and Park East has worked with this company in the past and has had success. We asked them also to review their bid to make sure that they were comfortable with their bid. They didn't miss anything. And they have gotten back to us as well, stating that they are comfortable with the bid. And, uh, that they are, you know, happy to take the project. So I would think probably sometime this week, uh, BBS and Park East will be sending letters of recommendation for JNH Construction. The telephone project, as I stated earlier, there was two bids received. Um, we had a meeting with one of the bidders, uh, the low bidder we had phone conversations with. The low bidder was East End Group. Based on those phone conversations, it appears that they misinterpreted the bid and that they in fact bid not what was in the scope. Um, we asked them to provide us a letter similar to the other contractor. Um, I was expecting it today. I am not receipt of it, but I will be contacting them tomorrow uh, to get that letter of withdrawal. The other bidder, who was the only other bidder, was LICN. Um, we conducted a prove-out meeting with them as well. They also had some concerning elements to their bid. It didn't seem like they were 100% clear with what was requested and what they bid on. I think there's going to have to be further dialogue with the district regarding, uh, that bid and determine the next plan of action, whether, uh, we're going to continue to meet with LICN or if we're going to rebid it. Um, so I'm just compiling all the information related to that bid. We're going to share it with the district in the next day or two and then request a meeting to, to go over the district's options related to it. And that's really the update regarding the bids. Any questions?
Why do you think there are only two respondents for the, uh, for the telephone portion?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Why do you think there are only two respondents for that? For the telephone part?
Yeah, I don't know. Location, uh, size of scope, I guess, could all weigh into it. It's, it wasn't a large scope. Um, there's not a big pool of telephone contractors out there to begin with. I think if we opted to rebid, we would, uh, definitely put some more feelers out there and try to get more interest in the project. Um, we thought we had, you know, at least two bids where we could compare and contrast them, but found out late last week that the other bid was not in fact something that we could compare and contrast to.
If those received, just through usual for posting of, you know, that you're searching for someone as opposed to actively reaching out to companies saying, hey, you want to be good on this?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
What is the manner of receiving these bids? I mean, you, you you put out like a search for this, where the people could respond to. You put out the RFP for people to respond to. But you're saying that going forward, if you have to do it again, you might have to actively reach out to companies to make them aware of it.
Correct. I think because of the size of the project, the location of it, it, you know, is advertised as, as all bids are. But I think if, knowing that we only got real, really one legitimate bidder, I think it would be in the interest of all parties that we reach out actively and, and, you know, make sure people just didn't miss it in, in the advertisements.
For, for the storage building, all, all we have left is JNH, right? I mean, it sounds like.
Well, the storage building, I, I think you're in a good situation with, with the bidders. You're within budget. The low bidder who didn't appear to have all the scope has withdrawn. And JNH has indicated that they have all the scope, that they're comfortable with their number. But there was, there was a several other bidders for that project. Uh, in fact, there was eight bidders associated with the new storage building. JNH just happened to be the second low. So you had good interest on, on that project. Other questions?
No, I think we're answered, Barry.
All right, Doug.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
So it is now time for public commentary. Number one, this public commentary is limited to items of board business, which is regarding our personnel, lineups, uh, and policy items. Uh, Julie or Anna or does anyone have any, um, has anyone received any questions about that?
See, actually, the questions will come in by phone if there are any. So they're going to put them in a queue and notify us if somebody calls in. If not, we can just proceed on.
And so how are they notifying us about?
Hey Barbara, this is LTV.
Hey Matt.
Hi Barbara. So when you come up to the public comments like you just did, just, you can actually say, Matt, do you have any phone, phone callers? And I will say yes or no, and then we can go on. But right now, we have no callers.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt.
Um, in that case, we will move on to, uh, personnel items. Um, Carrie, are you doing that from?
Yes, I am. I'm doing that from home. How's everyone this evening? Can you hear me, Matt?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Can everybody else hear me? The board?
I mean, I, I can hear you, Carrie.
Okay, Dave, thanks. Um, okay, so personnel this evening, uh, we are approving, um, some substitutes for RN. Um, and we're very excited to have some support for Ms. Girardi and, um, Ms. Gurney. They've been doing an outstanding job for us. Um, we also have a substitute custodian, bus monitor, and a lunch monitor. That is A. B are stifened appointments as per the STA contract. Uh, we're putting those on little by little this year as we need them to help support our students. Um, C is the medical, is a medical leave for one of our staff members. D is a at-will-at-call call-in office assistant at $25 an hour, Nicole Forsberg. And then E is to make her part-time office assistant, Nicole Forsberg. F is to extend our interim assistant principal, Maria Mondini. G is to amend the leave of absence for Beverly McGrath for childcare. H is, um, a leave of absence for Morgan Bach. H is, um, a leave of absence for Morgan Bach, one of our teaching assistants, and she will actually be, um, appointed on I as a temporary special education teacher point six and E N L teacher point four, so we're very happy to give this opportunity to Morgan Bach. And we then appoint Jay Dylan Cucci as a point six teaching assistant to fill in for Morgan Bach. Um, K is the appointment for Pat Grande point two Spanish. And L is our administration recertification as lead evaluators, um, for myself, Ms. Cleary, Ms. Mondini and Ms. Winter, so we can do our evaluations of staff. And M is the resignation of Elizabeth Mallon's office assistant, Spanish speaking. Um, that is personnel for this evening. Any questions?
Okay, we don't have any questions at this time, so do I have a motion to move, uh, personnel items A through N to a consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Deb, I know you're gonna handle the, the finance information this evening. The information I bring up, we have the status report and the, um, probation status report and the, and the revenue status report.
You need any explanations on either one of those?
Um, just before we do that, Barbara, I'd just like to take a moment to, uh, you know, recognize Mike's loss and, uh, and, you know, let, let the community know that, uh, well, he's on our dogs tonight, even though he's not here.
Yes, um. Mike, I'm reassigned here, there was a death in the family, and, uh, he's not with us this evening, unfortunately.
So you have the appropriation. That's more or less, uh, from seven, uh, one twenty twenty to six thirty twenty-one. Those are our current, um, expenses so far, what's been encumbered and what's available, really. There you go. And then the revenue status is the same thing, I, I looked at this today, and we called Julie and said, how are we paying the bills? And of course, we've, um, taken out a ten to, uh, carry us over until our revenues come in from both, uh, the town and from the state. Under going to finance, there's nothing to be approved there, correct? Yes, okay, you go to finance, you go to your warrants. There was nothing in the warrants, um, would like me to go over those in detail? Yeah, the major expenses.
We, we, we got the worst of the major expenses, thank you.
It, it's the tuition again.
Yes.
Okay, the claims audit report for October, this is done, um, our claims auditor. And again, uh, turn this around, is it? I can read it. Um, claims auditor, uh, again, found that, uh, the district is doing a very good job, uh, okay, credits to Kelly. For her hard work in making sure that our invoices and our POs match up. Sometimes we underestimate shipping and handling, that seems to be most of the, um, exceptions to this warrant.
Yeah, I noticed that, so how does that happen, I mean, when you order something, doesn't the shipping and handling, isn't that? How does this work in terms of this process?
I think I'm gonna turn that over to Julie, who deals with it on a daily basis.
Normally what happens is the requisition is put in and the anticipated cost is put in, and we usually allow for about fifteen percent shipping and handling. But depending on resources and availability, sometimes that shipping has to be altered and we have to, um, add money to the purchase order. Or sometimes we get free shipping and we can liquidate it, so at the end of the day, kind of washes each other out, but we do anticipate fifteen percent and sometimes have to increase it.
Okay, and you're putting in the requisition before you're placing the order.
Oh yeah, the requisition goes into the system and it's, um, approved by an administrator, and then it goes to Mr. Henry for a second approval. Then it comes to me for a final printing into a purchase order, and then Kelly then faxes it out.
Right, okay.
So all this is seen.
Right, so the price of the item itself is always approved, the shipping and handling is where?
Right, and, and sometimes we can get a discount on the item after the fact, so the money's been liquidated and put back into the budget again.
And then as you, um, heard from, um, Valley, we have the Abrams audit report for the year on two thousand nineteen twenty twenty. The tax levy calculation that was, um, sent over to the town, correct Julie? And then, um, contract, uh, is for a residential student. There is money in the budget because the student was a Bosie student, now going residential, and believe it or not, residential tends to be a lot less expensive than Bosie's. So it's just, um, an exchange there. And then we have all of our Chromebooks for disposal, these are Chromebooks that could not be used again, they can't even be used for parts. Uh, John has looked into companies that purchase parts, but they're really old and they're gonna be disposed of. Uh, the town of East Hampton has a special place for electronics, all our tags and labels have been removed and inventoried.
Okay, yeah, no reason, so I'm guessing are these from like the first rounds of ones that we first started giving to the fourth graders way back?
Yeah. And they have been picked apart for parts and-
Like, how long did we have these for?
I think there, are there some dates on these, Julie? I'm having a hard time opening things.
Four, three, four, five, six years.
Right, okay. Um, okay, does anybody have any questions about any of the finance items? Do I have a motion to move finance items A through F to consent agenda?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Carrie, special ed?
Sure, so special ed, as Ms. Winter said, we did have a few placement changes, um, one student's coming back from homeschooling, one student is going to, um, residential from Bosie's, and then the second, um, item on, just for approval, um, or for adoption, is the special ed plan. The updates are there, uh, for the, each student had to be taken, um, into consideration of their disability and how much time they're in the regular classroom, so those numbers are all up to date, so that is a complete plan from two thousand nineteen through the end of this year. Um, obviously, we did have some movement, so those numbers are as of bed's day, not of as of today.
Do I have a motion to move special education items A and B to consent agenda?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And then we have a number of policies on for second read and adoption.
We should, we're gonna do special education then?
That was, we just did that.
No, under, this would be under special education.
Yeah, we just did A and B in consent agenda. You just talked about.
Sorry. Just a question, Carrie, I know this was the first day special ed kids came back to the building.
Sure.
Can you tell us how that went today?
Um, it went pretty well, we did have a little technical difficulty with the shields. Um, one parent was, did not seem to know, um, I did reach out to them as well as some other parents, um, uh, two or three parents now have kind of a change of heart with our numbers going up due to COVID, just in general. So they are not sure if they're going to end up sending the kids back four days or if they're going to keep them and just do the two. So that is ongoing, I will keep you posted. But I did touch base this evening with our teachers, they seemed pretty happy, um, and the kids were in and, um, with a few parents to, as well.
Carrie, what is the number of students that came back today?
Um, there were, well, do you want the kids that were sick too, Deb, or total that were supposed to be here? There was supposed to be twenty-two students that came back. We do have a few kids out sick for a few reasons, and then the few students that I told you about, that parents are now having a change of heart.
Thank you.
Or concerns, I should say, with, yep.
Regarding the policies, again, we, uh, these are on for second reading and adoption, which means they've had their first read and had a chance to go over them. Does anybody have any questions at this time? Okay, be it so that the Board of Education hereby has a second read and adopts the following policies, first read was ten nineteen twenty twenty. Policy number, uh, eleven twenty, school district records revised policy. Policy number eleven twenty E one, application for public access to records, this is a revised policy. Policy number eleven twenty R, regulation. Policy number nineteen hundred, parental involvement revised policy. Policy number nineteen hundred E one, parent and family engagement. Policy number twenty-one sixty, board member, school district officers and employee code of ethics revised policy. Policy number fifty-one hundred, student attendance revised policy. Policy number fifty-one fifty, school admissions residency requirements revised policy. Policy number fifty-one thirty, student records revised policy, this replaced policy, uh, number fifty-five hundred. Policy number eighty-six twenty-five, privacy and security for student, teacher and principal data revised policy. Policy number eighty-six thirty-five, information security breach and notification revised data, oh, right, policy. Policy number, uh, forty-three twenty-one, students with disabilities. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, and it is time for the acting principals report, Ms. Cleary.
Nice and close, Ms. Cleary. Good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you can raise that up, so you don't have to do that.
I can hear, I feel like a jazz singer. Um, so I was asked to report on a few different items tonight, and it's my pleasure to do so, um, the first item is class tag. Class tag is a new program that we're embracing in order to, um, engage our parents, uh, prior to parent teacher conferences this week. Parent teacher conferences are Thursday evening, six to eight P M, and Friday the twentieth, uh, eight thirty to three o'clock. So this will be our first chance to really, you know, open up discussions with our parents about how their children are doing and how they did first quarter. Um, it's a, it was a quarter like no other, so, um, we're, we're very, very happy that we can, we can, um, reach out and schedule parents for these conferences. Um, so class tag is different than teacher reacher, that's what we used to use. Um, unfortunately, we found that teacher reacher was no longer meeting our needs during the COVID epidemic because, um, it did not allow for individual links to go out to parents, and because cybersecurity and privacy are, are two of our top priorities, we decided to go with class tag, class tag is integrated with Google, the Google suite, and we are a Google school. And, uh, in fact, their, their class tag motto is we play nicely with Google schools. So we took them up on that and it will integrate in that when parents send out the invitation through class tag, uh, either through text or email or phone, um, the parent then will respond and sign up for a parent teacher conference. Once they sign up, a Google Meet link will automatically be generated that is unique to that particular meeting, in that particular conference. Um, what we were, what we were hoping to avoid is to keep an open Google Meet link. Um, because that would, that could breach some confidentiality and cause some cybersecurity issues. So thank you to Mr. Holman and Mrs. Holman and Mr. Gibbons, uh, they have been integral in getting us to roll out class tag. The teachers have really embraced this, and although it was yet another new thing to learn this year, I think overall, we're having success with it. We will know better Thursday and Friday, but I believe we have most parents signed up already for Thursday or Friday's conferences. Um, it's very simple to use, it's very user friendly, twenty-five thousand schools in the, in the United States are already signed on and using it. And it has, um, language capacity in that it can translate up to sixty different languages, uh, in real time, so that's another benefit to this program. Um, and like I said, private and safe, so, uh, we are looking forward to rolling that out. One of the things that Mr. Holman and Mr. Gibbons did for us and for the parents, I'm just gonna present very quickly, on our school website. They have posted a presentation. There you go, it looks like this, it's on the main page of our website, it's in English and in Spanish. And if you just click on it, what it is, is a tutorial. Very easy step-by-step tutorial for parents to follow, okay? They have, um, also given a lot of troubleshooting and, and help to our teachers, so this is for the parents, and you could just scroll through. Can you see what I'm presenting?
Yeah, I can see, yes, yeah.
Cause it's not moving. Okay, and it really just takes you through step by step and shows you that once you get the invitation from the teacher, you pick your time slot. It generates a Google link, and then you go back to that Google link the day of the conference, at the time of the conference, and then that is a private link for you. Um, you can also use an iPad or a phone if you are on the run, like most of us are these days. And you can download the app right to your phone and you can have your parent teacher conference from anywhere that you are. Okay, it's compatible with Android and iOS, um, and like I said, available in many different languages. Just, I'm not gonna scroll through the whole thing, but I will show you that if you need the Spanish version, and maybe Anna or Alejandra could, uh, just follow up this presentation, uh, to explain to our Spanish speakers that it is also available in Spanish here.
Okay, so I think what we have on the, on board docs, this says class tag for teachers, because it was talking about an announcement being, you did not announce it, being seen from your home page, so this is not for parents that aren't working out here.
I'm not sure what you're looking, are you looking at what I'm presenting?
No, I'm not, I'm looking at a PowerPoint and the, the, the heading of it says class tag for teachers.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm looking at something that's from the, the teacher side, not-
The wrong link was put up there, don't know. Yeah, the one, the, the presentation for parents is on the website. And the presentation for teachers, yes. Oh, you got that.
We got the one for teachers.
Okay, was it tutorial for teachers? We're going to use it, yeah, so I'd like to thank again Mr. Gibbons and Mr. and Mrs. Holman for, for helping us through this, um.
The one on the website is the parent's.
I'm, I'm just glad there are two, for teachers, I don't remember.
Yes, we, we did not forget anybody, um, we know, you know, we know that, we, everybody's got a lot on their plate right now. Learning, uh, learning a new app and, uh, getting familiar is another, another challenge, so we tried to make it as easy as possible, so. And again, we're available for any questions and any troubleshooting if people need, you know, um, individual personal assistance.
Okay, great, it'll be interesting to see how this works, because I had seen a chat on Facebook, some people seemed to have some issues, and there was talk about why aren't we using teacher reacher, which I always found so easy. But, but with this being able to, um, create designated Google meets, I can certainly see where that right now for having to do virtual meetings would be a lot more helpful.
Right, and you know, we were also thinking, not only of our parents but our teachers, because if you are a sixth, seventh or eighth grade teacher and you have a hundred and twenty-five students, creating a Google meet for every single one of those parents is, is, is difficult, time consuming. So we were hoping to streamline, we're, we're all about streamlining this year and making things a little user, more user friendly.
Right, okay, thank you.
Um, one other thing I forgot to mention is that it is FERPA certified, so if anybody, you know, wants the information on that, um, it is really, they, they pride themselves on being really private. Um, moving on to superintendent's conference day, on November third, we had a lovely day, um, of learning and, uh, collegiality and all kinds of, again, uh, getting our feet wet with some new programs. This was, uh, most of the day was focused on remote learning and some of the apps and strategies and practices that we could use and get better at using to enhance- to enhance the instruction, the teaching and learning. So I again have to thank our tech gurus and, and presenters. Mr. Holman and, and Mr. Gibbons and Mrs. Holman. And all of our teachers who participated, they had opportunities throughout the day to sign up for either Google Classroom, Screencastify or Kami. And those are all very interactive programs that make learning more engaging. And also make assessing a little bit easier, because right now, you know, we're finding that many of our students and talking with our teachers had, did come in with a deficit because of, you know, going out of school last March, March through June. So we're trying to prioritize our standards so we can assess kids where they're at, meet them where they're at, and then scaffold the learning to make sure that they are moving, that we're moving the needle every single day. So that was our goal for Superintendent's Conference Day. Thank you to Ms. Winter for providing breakfast and being a great hostess and, and, and giving us this day of learning. I think it came at just the right time. I, 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 from feedback from the teachers, everybody got something out of it. Ms. Clary, our phys ed department was able to participate in Suffolk County Professional Development, which many times when it's not virtual, we can only send one phys ed teacher. So we were able to have all of them participate. Our nurses also participated, Suffolk County nurses, and they found that that was very helpful. And we can never send them to professional development on the same day. So they found it very helpful. E and L is going to participate on another day with Suffolk County. They just did not do it on that, that Tuesday. So it was a nice opportunity.
Did our P D teachers, did they get any other suggestions or recommendations?
They did. They got a lot of activities that they can do with, with equipment, but equipment that's limited to one child's use and how to clean it and how to really focus on the skills needed to play games. You know, many times they're limited in their time to spend on skills and they want to just get into the game. And now without having that contact, they've really been able to focus on skills. They really enjoyed it. They thanked us for being able to practice. And moving on to best practices for remote learning. I touched on some of that with our work at Superintendent's Conference Day, but we, we've been digging in pretty deep with the remote learning. I know there's been a lot of discussion around remote learning and best practices. And I want to again commend our teachers and my fellow administrators and superintendent, and pretty much everybody has been on board with this conversation. It hasn't been an easy one. And there's been a few major takeaways. One of the things, one of the things the teachers had asked for was more training on live streaming. Live streaming is a phrase that seems to get batted around, but it actually is sort of an umbrella phrase, and there's a lot more to it than I think even, even I understood in the beginning. We had the benefit of going over to East Hampton High School and seeing a co-taught math lesson at ninth grade level that was livestreamed. And some of our takeaways for that, and we want to thank, of course, everybody at East Hampton High School that, that invited us. Some of the things that we took away was that, that they're really, live streaming is not a silver bullet and it's not a one-size-fits-all. I think certain content areas and certain classrooms lend itself to heavier live streaming than others. I, the teachers that gave up their time to come with us that day were willing to really think outside of the box and entertain the thought of doing something a little differently. And I'd like to thank Ms. Farmer and Mr. Holman and Ms. Sullivan, who came with Mrs. Mondini and I, and Mr. Schimpfus, who was the math teacher and Ms. Butler at the high school. So I think what we learned was it's not a one-size-fits-all, however, it's worth a shot. And so one of the wonderful things that came out of that visit and some of the discussions was that we've seen probably a fifty percent increase in the amount of teachers and classrooms that have been sticking their toe into the live streaming pool over the last week and a half. So I've had the benefit, and I know Ms. Winter has too, and so has Mr. Lally and Ms. Mondini, of going in and watching some live streaming right here at spring school, whether it's at the elementary grades or the junior high. And it's, it's, the teachers know their kids better than anybody and they know what works for them. And so watching them do live streaming, not in the cookie cutter model, but in their own way to reach their population of kids has been quite extraordinary. So just, you know, last week I got to watch a math lesson in fifth grade that was being livestreamed, and I got to see the, the kids in two different cohorts kind of working together on a problem. And then today I got to see the social emotional learning and they were celebrating one of little third graders' birthday, and every child was going around and giving a compliment, an individual compliment to this particular child. And, and they were just all beaming. It was like interaction that they really missed. And so I, I want to, really, I have to commend our teachers. They have been willing to, to, to jump right in and try and continue to hone their craft and do what's right for our kids and do what's best for, for our kids. So I think we're on the right course and we'd like to continue with that journey.
That's great. I'm so happy to hear that and that people are, you know, like you said, willing to stick their toe in.
Yeah.
It's going to take certainly a while for people to get used to it. And as you said, find out best practices for those kids, because those teachers really know best where to use that particular tool and where other tools are, are necessary. So, you know, thank you for taking them over to the high school, to East Hampton, for having them and, and giving us a chance to, you know, to learn something.
Of course. You know, we're all learning. I'm learning right along with everybody else. So it's been, it's, it's been a real gift. So thank you and thank you for Ms. Winter for allowing us to do that.
Sorry. Enrollment report. Oh, sorry, wait, Anna?
Did you want me to go over the quick, there's a little quick video in Spanish for the Class Tag? On the website?
The video? No, it's not a video.
Directions, like the steps are just mentioned that it's there.
Mention where it is and how to access it and that, that it is available. That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Para los padres de habla hispana, quería informarles que en, en la página de la escuela hay información acerca de cómo registrarse para las conferencias de este año que se llevan a cabo la otra semana, el jueves y viernes. Tienen que meterse a esta página, se llama Class Tag. O en español también lo tienen en español. Toda la información la tienen en español. Se llama etiqueta de clase para padres y cuando entra ahí hay un, un pequeño, una, una pequeña presentación de cómo inscribirse. Le da paso a paso las, los pasos a seguir para, para inscribirse. Tiene que apuntarse, elegir una hora en la fecha que prefiere. Y después tiene que, una vez que ya le confirman y, y le reservan esa, esa hora, después el día de la reunión tiene que volverse a meter ahí para encontrar, encontrar el enlace que necesita para abrir la reunión entre usted y el, el maestro o maestra de su hijo. El día, el día de, de su reunión, a la hora de su reunión, puede, puede meterse a esa reunión, pero ahí si tienen cualquier duda pueden llamar a la escuela, hablar con, pueden hablar con la secretaria que es bilingüe o pueden pedir ayuda con alguien que les ayude a traducir. Gracias.
Thanks, Anna.
Thank you, Anna.
Welcome, welcome.
Our enrollment report. We have six hundred and thirteen students between our A and B cohort, another thirty-six students that are being homeschooled, and another six students that are on remote learning through homebound instruction the district provides. We also have another thirty, almost thirty, twenty-seven students in pre-K. And last year at this time, we were at seven hundred and fifteen students. This year, if we count all of our students, we're at six eighty-three, slightly down from the previous year. Questions on enrollment? Moving up there? Yes, my, my least favorite topic. Okay. Well, on November tenth, Suffolk County Department of Health investigated approximately nine hundred positive cases associated with over three hundred distinct schools. The data indicated the efforts the districts have made to reduce the risk of transmission in our schools are working. By that I mean they're not being transmitted in the schools. The sources of these transmissions are outside of school districts. So schools have been exercising social and physical distancing, ideally six feet apart are the desks and the chairs. Desk are essential. They're being worn on regular means with some allowable breaks. Shields. Shields and barriers are a great tool, especially when children are having snack or eating. Ventilation is important. We are still waiting for armor filters, but they have been promised. We do keep our doors and windows open to get cross ventilation. Because of the success that the schools have had, our Department of Health is no longer investigating each individual case at a school district. They're only looking at clusters. So you might have heard about East Islip had six teachers. So that they would investigate, but they're not going to investigate an individual case in a school district anymore. Their major concern or interest right now is community spread. That's where they're focusing their, their energy. Not that we don't keep in mind that individuals that are unmasked for longer than ten minutes at a time are the point of spread. So it's very important that we have our masks on at all times, that we're never really, really in between six feet and that we keep track of those interactions, because those could be what's considered a close contact. The districts still have to report daily and submit to the report all the number of staff. That's why I know the, the enrollment by heart these days, because I'm reporting them daily. School districts have to play a key role in keeping the community up and running. This is where, as a school district, we need to take this really seriously. Because a school district whose numbers are up could actually shut down local businesses or an entire community. So this is what's called zoning, the yellow zone, the orange zone and the red zone, which you might have heard about. The yellow zone for Suffolk County is tier one, and it has a seven-day rolling average positivity of two-point-five percent for ten days. That's more than ten new cases for a hundred thousand residents on average of seven days. And believe it or not, there are some districts that are close to that right now. We are nowhere near that. We had two cases so far in spring school. To put this in perspective, two cases for Springs. One case was quarantining a class and a teacher, another case because a student had already been quarantined and out of school for almost ten days. No quarantine or closure was required on the behalf of Springs.
So, sorry, Deb, question. So when you're talking about this, like the yellow zone like that without the inspection. You're talking about it as on a school level, not like the county level where we had all been before and then changed to, to that.
No, it, this, this.
You're talking about school.
School and county, okay, but a school district could actually impact the location. So let's say a Hampton Bays. But that could also throw the entire county into this quote orange or red zone, which could lock us down. The more you test and the more that percentage becomes wider, the better. So in Hampton Bays right now, they'll be testing more to try to bring that percentage down. If you test seventy-five students and ten of them are positive, that's a seven-point-five percent testing ratio, which is high. But if you test more, which is what they're suggesting, test twenty percent of all your staff and all your students, and still only seven test positive, then you're no longer at seven-point-five. It, it, it's, it's really numbers and it, and it's good data to have. The problem we're seeing on the east end is there is not enough testing to go around. They're, they're just, if you want to get tested over the weekend, you couldn't, you got an appointment for sometime Tuesday or Wednesday. And, and that's a concern.
Especially with the holidays coming up. And if you are going to travel out of state or if you're coming from out of state, in-state, then you have to be tested again. So that's going to even cause those lines to get longer for testing.
So you have your college students coming back too. For our parents, for our students, for our staff, I can't thank everybody enough for taking proactive steps. And by that I mean, parents are keeping their children home. They are taking Mr. Ardi and Ms. Gurney's phone calls and answering three or four questions related to why their children are out. Out. That's very important information and I want to thank our parents and staff for that. I do want to remind parents and our staff of the Governor's Executive Order regarding travel. Anyone leaving the state for the holidays must be tested three days prior to returning to New York and then quarantine again until the fourth day where they can get tested or quarantine for fourteen days after re-entering New York. Our governor has limited gatherings to ten people. And he's advising dinner be outside or at least with windows open, social distancing and mask worn. We did send out a letter to all parents in English and Spanish, and a very similar letter went to our staff. For our staff, we have asked if they will be traveling to please let us know, because that will impact our ability to open the day after Thanksgiving if we're impacted by not having staff. The district's been able to manage our quarantined students and our quarantined staff. By quarantining, that person is quarantined for fourteen days. They may not be sick. But if there's a family member that's sick or they've come in close contact with somebody, they have to quarantine. Our teachers who have been quarantined have been teaching remotely. So they're being promoted into the classroom and a substitute is there for the behavior of the students in the class, but the actual teacher is teaching. So we want to thank our teachers for doing that. I need to also recognize the individuals that I work with every day. They come to work, they have smiles on their faces, and yet I know that they're nervous and they're anxious. I want to thank our teachers for the outstanding job they've been doing. They really are working double duty, teaching remotely and teaching in person every day, planning for two types of learning. Mr. Ardi and Mrs. Gurney are two nurses. I don't think I've ever interacted with them so much in the four years I've been here as I do now. We're in contact every day. Our teacher assistants have received a reprieve thanks to those new temperature checks. They do not have to stand over a child in that car, but they come into the building and they're on stands now. They're making them feel a lot more secure in taking temperatures. Our teacher assistants also work very closely with our students. They are the ones within that six-foot distance. Our bus monitors, we've been very fortunate to have bus monitors on our buses, thank you to our Board of Education. These same bus monitors, their schedule is ridiculous. They're up at six o'clock, some of them. They come back at eleven to do lunch duty. They go home for another couple of hours and they're back again for the ride home with our students. So I want to really recognize them for their efforts. Our drivers continue not only to drive our buses, but clean, disinfect and maintain them. Our business official Mike, thank you for recognizing him and the loss of his dad tonight. But he continues to oversee the business office, Julie and Kelly. The ordering of supplies and dealing with vendors and trying to push our orders to the top has been a feat in itself, because we're all trying to get the same supplies and materials, every, every district. Our custodians continue to clean, disinfect, we stock P P A supplies. You guys walked through the building today. It, it looks almost the same as it did when we first opened. So they've been doing tremendous job. I'm assisted by great administrators all around. Mrs. Mondini makes me laugh every day. She's, she's a pleasure to work with. And Mrs. Clary and Mrs. Delalio continue to, to be a pleasure to work with. My, there was administrator who once told me, you're only. There was an administrator who once told me, "You're only as good as your assistants." And sometimes we don't realize to thank our assistants that keep us on schedule and keep us safe and fed. So, I want to thank Linda Canal for doing that for me. Before I get into our reopening plan, I just want to take this opportunity to thank our families again and wish everybody a safe, happy Thanksgiving. I know I'm grateful for all the community support that I've received during this very difficult time. And I think we just have to realize, if we can't celebrate the way we normally did, you know, as long as we have our health and our immediate families, we have everything. Just wanted to make sure to tell everybody to be safe this year. Any questions on the COVID update that keeps giving?
No, but thank you for pointing out what great staff we have here at the school and what a hard job everyone's doing. And so, you know, my hat goes off to everyone here. Nobody asked for this, and by all appearances, it looks like everybody's really making heroic efforts to work with our students and make things as normal as possible in this weird circumstances to really be there for our kids. So, you know, we really appreciate what our teachers and what the staff here at the school do.
It takes a group effort, it really does. Ready for phase two? We're definitely going to make sure that this gets translated a little bit. So, let me just open up with that this has not been easy. Google keeps a running list of all my changes, so it has been a very fluid document as we keep track of everything that's going on. The Board of Ed had their parent forum, which gave us some information. We've been meeting together as an administrative team. We've been meeting with the Springs Teachers Association, with our civil service employees, CSCE. Our school physician is on speed dial, and of course Suffolk County Department of Health. Our plan was developed in belief that in-person learning is integral to the academic, physical, and social development of our students. But we also have to acknowledge the various concerns across our community related to COVID-19. This plan is subject to change based on the Suffolk County Department of Health, the state guidance, and restrictions. The health and safety of our students and our staff continues to be our top priority. Please note that all K-5 classrooms will be set up in compliance with SED, CDC, and Department of Health guidelines. Six-foot distance between desks, using protective equipment such as desk shields. In all cases, students will be provided 28 to 50 square feet radius of distance while seated in their classrooms. Density in our classrooms and on our buses will increase. Both our local physician and Department of Health indicated that increasing density will likely increase the cases of COVID-19. But all safety measures will continue to mitigate the increase. Safety measures include social distancing, wearing masks, desk shields, face shields, ventilation, disinfecting, and frequent hand washing. Spring School reopening phase two with the goal of returning all K-8 students to in-person learning over time. Instruction will be four days per week with a commitment to improving instruction on remote days, which we've already seen an increase. Teachers have already improved face-to-face instruction with our students. Many teachers have implemented live streaming at various points throughout the day. The original plan called for teachers checking in with students, and now teachers are expected to teach 30 minutes in front of students. Live face-to-face instruction on periods designated for their remote instruction. Virginia High, where teachers teach multiple grades, will teach 20 minutes per subject during their remote period. AIS and ENL services have started. We're expecting our teachers to push in and pull out services. And administration will work with these departments to deliver these services safely and minimize the commingling of students. That's why the additional ENL staff that we needed. The district will reinstate early morning extra help, formerly early morning homework help, by grade and by cohort, again, no commingling. Mondays would be one of the four sections by grade. So, by the end of the week, that extra help teacher would have seen all four sections of second grade outside. So, they would not commingle, but at least every class we'd get some extra help one day a week. We will start this in all grades as long as we can staff it and based on students' needs. Parents would have to provide transportation at this time because there's not enough time in between routes in order to disinfect the bus runs. So, we'll start off with that. If a high school should shut down and we don't need those buses for high school, we could revisit transportation. But right now, the high school is coming in. For the remote learner who is struggling, the district will look to provide grade-level remote support. Parents, students, and staff would have input as to which students would benefit from this additional support when they are remote. Tentative dates for COVID reopening is based on COVID metrics. We have to keep our eye on this. Today, the special ed cohort students K-5 returned four days in person. Tentatively, K-2 students will return four days in-person learning on Friday, December 11th. K-2 students are spread out between the SYA building, main building, and portables. The reason for December 11th is consistent with the Governor's revised travel advisories. Individuals traveling as New York State, as you heard, either have to quarantine for three days and get tested, or quarantine for 14 days. By picking December 11th, that two-week period after Thanksgiving would have passed. So, anybody who was commingling, anybody who was at a large gathering would have passed the time of being infected. So, we think that that will be safe for our families, for our staff, and allow us, it seems odd for a Friday, but it will allow us to make changes over the weekend should we need any changes to be made. Tentatively, grades three to five could return four days a week, January 15th. This follows a similar model to the Thanksgiving, allowing for those two weeks for travel after Christmas, and again, safely return our students and staff to the building. Tentatively, sixth through eighth grade students would return four days in-person learning on Monday, February 8th. This is the start of the new semester. Want to remind the board that the sixth, seventh, and eighth are in three sections. We have to go to four sections with existing staff, and the best time to do that is with the change of the semester. If you do that mid-year, in a midsemester, you might have to change teachers, change grades. It just doesn't lend itself. So, we're looking at that Monday, February 8th for the start of sixth through eighth. And everything is based on the Governor's COVID numbers and advisories. Spring School will continue the early arrival time and dismissal times. With the extended arrival and dismissal times, parents have indicated that that really helps with car line. We are going to maintain 44 students on a bus, so it's possible we may have double runs. I don't think it'll be, you know, a large number, but there will be double runs. We did purchase the better thermometers, and they are inside the buildings. The daily health questionnaire, we are working to do this electronically. Right now, it's being managed for students through our nurses, and Carrie is monitoring the staff. When we increase the number of students, you have to increase the way that you check this electronically, and we're working on that. Windows will continue to be open, MR filters have been promised again this week. Our students continue to be cohorted. They go outside as a group, they have lunch as a group, they do not go in the hallways. They're frequently washing their hands, PPE supplies are available. Disinfecting frequently during the day, we have our misters. Parents continue to cooperate with us and have your children stay home. Compliance with mask-wearing has not been an issue for our students or staff. Social distancing, as I said, we purchased, and they have arrived, smaller desks. Shields for the desks fit very nicely on there. And in fact, we set them up in one of our kindergarten rooms, and the children said, "Now I can safely take my mask off." That was a kindergartner's room walk. They understand more than we know. We also purchased desk shields that were very sturdy. They stay in a little groove, and the children are not knocking them over or having them interfere with instructions. Expectations for your child's in-person learning, again, we ask that our students bring back their technology, their Chromebook, every day because we never know which day we'll end up on full remote. We need to maintain our students or our staff that do get sick in quarantine rooms. That will continue. We expect our students to miss any work to make up their lost work. If we end up on full remote, we expect our children to sign in. We expect our parents to make sure their emails and their phone numbers are up to date so that we can send them frequent instructions as to how we're doing and when we could reopen. We would expect our K-5 students to follow their schedules. They would get all their specials as well, and our six to eight students would follow their normal schedule if we ended up on full remote. When parents go into their report cards, they go to see an acceptable use policy to read and sign off on, as well as a field trip form so that our teachers can take our students over to Prissy's Pond, take a walk off the grounds. You know, as it gets colder, moving them around when they're outside is a little bit better than them staying. We feel we can do all of this with the staff that we've spoken about. 1.4 ENL staff and another TA for ENL, and the 0.6 special ed, which we've already hired, the 0.6.4 split with Morgan Bump. And then, we'll get back to you on the extra help hourly, what that looks like expense-wise, and who can volunteer to do that, and our existing staff, or maybe a substitute to provide the extra help. Okay, thanks, Deb. Do you want Anna to summarize that Anna has? Yeah, the written version.
Anna, do you want to give a summary of that in Spanish?
Yeah. I don't have a copy of the written version, but I kind of took his best notes.
I emailed it to Anna.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. I didn't look at my emails before this, but
I
We can like go back and forth, and I guess we can see what we each got from notes.
Yeah. Yeah. You want to do that? I mean, I was writing notes as best I could as we went along.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this will be posted on the website in Spanish also. But if you want to give a quick, you know, overview of it in terms of, you know, like proposed dates and some of the things that are being suggested with more information.
The early morning extra help will begin on December 11th, or do you think I missed that?
The extra help is, we'll get that out as soon as we have that all set up.
Okay.
The important thing are the K-2 return December 11th.
Right.
Want me to go? I kind of took some, I can go over what I took and then maybe see what we missed, and then we can fill in the gaps as we go, or?
Okay, sure. Buenas noches, padres. Les quiero dar un resumen de el plan de apertura, la segunda faceta, a seguir ahora. Los cambios que van a ocurrir son basados siguiendo las medidas de seguridad que los mandatos que ha implementado el gobernador como. Tenemos que seguir la guianza del departamento de salud, seguir las medidas de seguridad que hemos tenido hasta el momento como la distancia social, usar mascarillas, tener ventilación en las aulas. Una de los datos son apoyo adicional en las mañanas. Han comenzado, no en las mañanas, disculpe, apoyos adicionales han comenzado, lo que quiere decir apoyo en lectura, en escritura, en idioma, aprender inglés. Eso ya se ha puesto en pie. El distrito pronto brindará ayuda dexta un día por semana antes de la entrada a clases. Todavía no se ha fijado una fecha, se va a hacer lo más pronto posible. Por ahora, las fechas programadas son lo que es el grado en kinder, primero, segundo, segundo grado. Entrarían el 11 de diciembre, vendrían, en vez de dos días a clases, vendrían cuatro días a clases. De tercero a quinto. I missed the date on third through fifth.
Mecha.
No, that was actually January. When third will be coming back four days a week.
January.
January 15th.
En los grados en tercero, cuarto, y quinto, la fecha de regreso para empezar los cuatro días por semana serían el 15 de enero, a partir del 15 de enero. Sexto, séptimo, y octavo sería a partir del 8 de febrero. Las horas de entrada y salida con esos cambios seguirán igual porque los padres han comunicado que eso ayuda mucho, ¿verdad?, tener esos minutos extra a la salida y a la entrada de clases. Las encuestas que se llevan a cabo se van a revisar electrónicamente. Espera que eso se pueda hacer pronto porque, ¿verdad?, con el aumento de volumen de estudiantes va a haber más encuestas que revisar. Entonces, electrónicamente sería más fácil. Lo que son los materiales de protección personal, ¿verdad? Se están probando eso en escuela para mantenernos a todos protegidos. Las computadoras portátiles que hay unos estudiantes que apenas ahora recientemente están empezando a llevar a casa o ya pronto lo van a empezar a llevar. Es muy importante que lo traigan todos los días a la escuela. Eso es, ¿verdad?, esa es la manera en que se van a educar más en estos días. Todas sus asignaciones y cosas van a estar en su computadora portátil o los Chromebooks. Entonces, es muy importante que los traigan todos los días a clases y que los regresen todos los días a casa. Es muy importante también, se les recuerda que mantener la información al día, su información personal, sus números de teléfono, por si tienen algún cambio. Es muy importante que nos avisen en caso de que tengamos que comunicarnos con ustedes, si hay un cambio en el horario, si hay que cerrar la escuela, cosas así. That's all I have.
And luego que la fecha de diciembre 11 se va, acaban de poner esa fecha porque están tomando en cuenta que son las dos semanas después del día de gracias. Entonces, acción de gracias, entonces por eso están pusiendo en esa fecha del 11 de diciembre. Y luego la fecha para de sexto, octavo grado, la fecha de lunes, febrero 8. Y lo más fácil que se les puso ahí es porque tienen que empezar en un semestre nuevo, y esa fecha empieza el semestre nuevo para esos grados. Y también que entonces cuando entren los demás estudiantes, van a ver tal vez 44 estudiantes en el autobús. Van a mantener esos números en el autobús. Pero si incrementa la cantidad de estudiantes que tienen que tomar el autobús, entonces tal vez pueden tomar, los autobuses van a tomar doble ruta para regresar a la escuela y recoger más estudiantes. That's really stuff that I thought that I would add on.
Thank you very much. And again, this will all be posted on both English and Spanish for if you want further information on that.
Excuse me, school board?
Esto también.
Yes. Excuse me, I'm sorry, you have one caller holding, just want to let you know.
Okay, thank you. When this will go to be, we'll be going to public commentary, let me know.
Nada más quería informarles que toda esta información y esto es lo que la señorita Aguilar y yo acabamos de
Es, nada más quería informarles que toda esta información y esto es lo que la señorita Aguilar y yo acabamos de resumir, verdad, son más o menos los puntos más importantes de la presentación, pero ambas presentaciones en inglés y en español van a estar, las van a publicar en el sitio de internet de la escuela. Alguna, cualquier pregunta, pueden llamar con sus preguntas, y aquí estamos para ayudar.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Ms. Aguilar.
Any questions about the, what we want, I think we want to talk about on the reopening plan here of the board?
I just think again, as we looked at this and have heard, again, time will tell, I mean, this plan does have an opportunity to put something in place and then see what happens. I think in the next coming months, especially after the holidays, it's hard to predict what's going to happen out there. So I think it's wise to really monitor it day by day, and, you know, today was the first day we had special ed kids back. Continue to monitor that, and looking towards December, see how things are going before we make that final decision. And, you know, again, just be flexible, be open, be, and monitor closely the rates and what's happening, and staying within the guidelines for the CDC and the DOH are really important to do. Because you just really can't predict, yes, we want our kids back, all of them back, but we still want to be as safe as we've been in the past, if not more during this critical time.
No, certainly, I mean, I hope everybody understands that this is a plan and not set in stone. It's a Google Doc with many, many new visions, actually. And December eleventh could roll around, and this may very well not be feasible to bring people back in four days. So this is the plan, and if something doesn't happen that day, it's through powers that are out of our control, really. But this, I mean, I think this sounds like a pretty good plan in terms of the time of year it is, taking into consideration gatherings, whether people being inside more, you know, what could possibly go wrong with all that. And then I also like the providing the, as much extra help as possible that will be available to people and may help out those parents who sounded really very, sounded very frustrated. And hopefully, you know, this will provide a bit of something for everyone, and again, with the teachers doing some more live interaction with their kids in the format that they think helps most. You know, this combined, all these combined efforts will hopefully be providing our kids with a good education. But again, it is all based on the numbers and what's going on in the state.
Yeah, like I said, you know, I think it's a good plan, too, and I like the idea that you're working at both angles of it now. You need to figure remotely, how are we going to handle remotely, how are we going to go back into school? One of the things you brought up earlier, you're talking about, you know, and have to base them on it, too, and now, you know, one child gets sick, if COVID in the classroom, that child is going to affect the current moment, twelve students. If we fill a classroom, it would be thirty students, which means thirty families, which means thirty people, you know, thirty families will be out of work, at least fourteen days. You know, that's a big economic income to this town, you know, a lot of our families, one of them couldn't afford not to be out of work for two weeks. And so we, you know, take a portion of reasons, you know, like, you know, that's what we have to do, you know. So I'd like to do work on both plans, though, you know, getting the kids back in slowly, but also try to put a real good remote control plan in place as well. The teachers seem like they're up for it, I don't know if teachers want their kids back, you know, the parents want them back, but we can't, can't rush it. You know, and I'm, it's hard, just, it's tough, you know, I was thinking about this the other day, you know. Forty-two kids out for two weeks, doesn't seem like a lot, but twenty-two families sitting home for two weeks is tough. You know, out here, well, it's a service community. There's not too many businesses that people that work for school district that work for the town. A lot of companies are individually owned. Those individually owned companies have been really affected, so really got to take it slow. You know, and you want, you're doing it the smart way, and it's hard, you know, I want my kids back in school, and every other parent does, but we can't put them back in the school, they're not safe, they're not safe for the best person, you know. I think you're doing a great job, you know, the teachers are, you know, they're adapting. I ran into a couple of teachers not in this school district, just by chance, just talked to them, it affected their lives, and I take it for granted. You know, and I, at the end of the day, these teachers are still working night, trying to figure out the next day. You know, what are they doing, and they didn't, when they became teachers, I don't think they took on being in front of a microphone and a camera and those students in front of them. But, you know, it's a lot, you've got to give it to them, and, you know, it's a lot of work.
I'm wearing a mask all day.
And wearing a mask all day, and also being a disciplinary of students who take their mask off. It's one more level of stress, you know. They always call it the broken shoelace. You know, you don't know what could happen, so you got to take it slow and easy. I think you're doing a great job, and, you know, and it's hard, I know your positions aren't doing it. All you, all the teachers, I want to thank you.
Deb?
That's Dave.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to add what Pat was saying. I really appreciate the administration and the teachers putting together this plan. I think it says a lot that they're willing to listen to the community and see what we can do, at least with some of those parents a few weeks back that had some thoughts and concerns and the fact that they're trying to do something so that we can get kids into school more than the two days a week is great. One question I had was, once we get that, let's say, that first group back in four days a week, and then maybe eventually the next group, the next group of grades, what, what kind of options do we have for parents if they prefer to have their kid maybe only coming into school just the two days a week as opposed to the four days a week, what options would we have for those parents?
Each one of those individually, and see what we can do. It's definitely something that we have to look at and respect, like we have with the special ed parents.
Right, so, plus with the live streaming now that a lot of the teachers are starting to do, that could be a feasible option possibly for some of those parents.
Correct, it comes down to numbers, too, you know, how many.
Does anyone on board have any other questions about the plan at this point? We've got a couple more items to go to, and then there'll be a public commentary. So what I have new business is changing our December meeting dates around. We have a regular meeting scheduled for the twenty-first and a work session on the seventh, and just logistically with the month of December, we should really swap those around, so does that work for everyone?
Yes.
The next regular meeting on December seventh, and then we have the twenty-first as a work session, yes? Okay, great. And then we have our, the revised emergency response plan that we need to approve, so are there any questions at this time?
Julie, do you have any public comments? This is, no, I don't have.
Okay. Ready to approve that, then? Okay, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the Health and Safety Action Plan as presented for hearing at the October fifth, twenty twenty work session. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I hear the student council back in.
Yes.
Which is probably most normal thing, I guess, you know. Maybe you all could do it as next one, and talk to us about it.
Sure, and the eighth grade advisor you approved, May, she is going to work with Owen McFlumick and see what creativity they can come up with for our eighth graders this year. Going to look a little different, but they definitely want to see how they can make it nice enough.
Well, I was really happy to see that we have like a journalism coordinator plus the yearbook advisors, and that some things are going ahead as normal, and maybe there's more scope for journalism while people might have some extra time in their at-home remote, or do, I mean, maybe, you know. What's the plan?
I don't want to give up the school. Now, Mr. George, it is the journalism. She is thinking of actually producing a spring school news program, which, you know, the situation really lends itself quite nicely to that. So we're looking forward to, she, she made a proposal, and we're just working out the logistics.
Okay, sounds great. Okay, so at this time, we will go into public commentary number two, where we can take questions or comments from the audience. You have, would have a three-minute time limit for anything you want to say. Julie will be doing the timing, and you can call in, I guess there's a number that you will see there on LTV, and we will take calls as they come up. Talking about dipping your toe in and trying something new, let's see how this goes. So Matt, do you have any calls there?
Uh, excuse me, we had a drop call, so you have zero callers.
Julie, did you have any emails about anything? Yeah, we'll give it another minute in case anybody wants to call us.
Could you call up?
And just for the record, I do have the phone number viewing on YouTube and on the LTV website, so the phone lines are open and the phone number's there.
Dave, you want to give us a call, just so we get a call, or?
Don't have one, so, yeah, it's okay, don't listen to her, okay?
Well, hopefully this means maybe we've answered a lot of people's questions, but with our previous meeting and the fairness of the plan that you're going over, and of course, you do not actually have to call in. If you have a question, you can certainly address questions to your teacher or administrator or superintendent at any time by email, it does not have to be in this kind of forum. So, okay.
I take that back, there's now two callers.
All right.
Would you like to take them?
Yes, we would.
Okay, please stand by. And caller, you are live. Could you please speak a little bit louder, caller? Caller, I'm sorry, you're very low volume, and we cannot understand you. Okay, I guess we're done with callers.
Both callers, we had an issue with both calls. Matt?
I'm sorry, Barbara, what was that?
I'm just, I'm curious, did both calls have that poor reception?
I, I don't know, only the one, I unmuted, so I don't know if it was bad reception or not.
We couldn't understand anything that the person was saying, is the second caller?
The second caller is not there, they dropped also.
All right, Matt, thank you very much for your efforts this evening, we really appreciate it. Sorry to whoever was trying to call in, we did not hear you. You want to try from a landline, or again, as I said, you can always email in a question, and somebody will be happy to, or call the school and we get back to you. Any other items at this point?
No, Barbara, real quick, so Deb, just, I want to get those dates clear in my head. So the recommendation from the superintendent is the special ed K through five came in today, starting four days a week, and then you're looking at December eleventh for K through two, and then tentatively January fifteenth, three through five, and February eighth, six through eight. Do I have those dates right?
Yes. Yes, Dave.
And until that time, everybody will remain on hybrid, coming back after Thanksgiving on the thirtieth. The K through two will be hybrid until the eleventh.
Correct. That's all contingent on the current numbers.
Okay, thank you very much, that's, although it was very thorough, I know how hard you've been working, we really appreciate it.
Not easy, not easy, no.
Also like to thank the two lovely ladies who are translating for us tonight, it was great, thank you so much.
Appreciate having you both here, thank you.
Much gusto.
They work so hard.
Yes.
And in that case, Matt, if we have no one else for public commentary, then do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.